I will call to order the Finance Building and Grounds Committee meeting, which was duly noticed on December 11, 2015 through posting a notification of the press in accordance with Wisconsin statutes 19.84. So we have done that. Safety message. Does anyone have a safety message to share with us that would fit in?
I'd just say with the warmer temperatures, it's been interesting to see the amount of fog that's rolled in at 9:30 in the morning rather than early in the morning. So the deer are still running. You need to be careful when you're in the country roads. Everybody should practice safe travel tips during the holidays. Sometimes people get hostile and road rage occurs. It's supposed to be holiday spirit, so try to take it easy. Allow yourself a little extra time for the holiday travels.
Thank you. That was very timely. Okay. Let's move on. First item, but the third actually, and that's Keith, the discussion of updated school-level funds handbook.
Thank you, Commissioner Donnelly. We sent out as part of the package filed, and this had been distributed to the board earlier, school-level funds handbook. What I wanted to do was just have this sent to the committee.
Just to show some of the work, and I have Jamie and Matt here, so as always, if it was really good, I did it. If not, it was them. But no, in all honesty, they spent a ton of work updating our handbook. This was our former handbook, which looks, this should have been double-sided, but it wasn't. It looks like, oh, it's about the same, but not really. This was filled with board policies and forms. What they've done is they've taken all the steps that we had there before, but expanded it into not just a "this is the rule, this is the rule." Now it's a "this is the rule, and these are the five to 10 to 25 steps you have to take to do the job you're supposed to do." You know, the secretaries at the schools, the people that handle the money, the people that balance the money, the people that send it in to the district for deposits and so on. And I just wanted this to be recognized by the committee since it is finance and it's finance-related, to show that the handbook has been updated. It's been something we've wanted to do for the past couple of years, but due to timing of having open positions, primarily comptroller position, open two or three times in the last two or three years, we've been able to nail down with Jamie taking over as the comptroller and Matt moving in with his audit experience to really give it the hard hit that it really needed because it is time-consuming, it is detailed, and you have to map everything out before you put it in print because if not, you'll hand it to somebody and they'll say, "I don't do it that way," or "What about this?" Like I said, we've put this together, we've put it on the drive. Matt and/or Jamie have had meetings with the secretaries of the schools and with bankers. Every time we have a meeting with somebody, it's like, well, maybe we should include somebody else. Maybe we shouldn't include somebody else. So the other benefit, it's one thing to have a handbook, it's one thing to update a handbook, but it's another thing to sit down and have actual live training with the people that have to do it, answer the questions right when they happen, and everybody that is similar in position will hear the same answers to the same questions all at one time. So I'm not going to go over any details. This wasn't anything that needed approval. I just wanted to bring it up to everybody and suggest, since you are the Finance Committee, it may be helpful to page through here and see the detailed steps that are involved with us trying to secure the cash transactions. We've made a few changes, and you would be surprised by the volume of cash that gets transacted through the districts by students bringing in money that used to go through teachers at high schools. Now they're going through a single source. And we set up a new position called a fee para, and people bring in, the kids bring their fees in, it goes straight to this person. And what was that, Jamie? What was it, one day or two days?
Every day.
But I mean, that one time, when they had seven, they got $17,000.
Oh, since November 9th to November 30th. There's two fee periods at each high school, and they only worked during the lunch hours. They had brought in almost a little over $17,000.
So you can see, and these aren't people dropping off $500 deposits, you know? This is all two, three, eight, nine, six, whatever.
Files of change.
Right. So we're tightening it up. I wanted to just put this in front of you so you had it if you wanted to print it out because it was an attachment. That way you don't have to find it on the website. But just wanted to bring it to the committee's attention.
Okay.
And again, really, there's nothing new as far as the rules. We just added steps to tell everybody how to do it. So there wasn't a "I'm not sure how to do it," or "Nobody told me," or the other items we tend to run up against.
I have a couple of questions. So you did revise some parts of this compared to the old, right? There's additions or there's the board policy. This is the latest version of the document, right?
Basically, what it is, is it's the same steps. The old board policy said you must have two people count the money and take it to the banker and get a receipt. Now we are telling them every single little step all the way through and where it finally ends up.
Yeah, so my suggestion would be on a document like this, that if you, and this isn't an urgent thing, but if you put a revised date on the bottom, there's no, I don't see any date on here that says revised December 2015 so that future boards could go, "I wonder when they looked at that last." That would be one thing. The second would be, I'm sure you have training planned for the summer school staff, which is a whole nother cycle of this, so I'm assuming that's going to happen. And then the third would be occasionally it's helpful to do a frequently asked questions document that goes with this that you generate over the next six months. And you could take notes when people call you, the bankers could take notes, people who take money in could take notes, and just write down questions. And sometimes, I know on DPI's website, it's very helpful to have the 10 most frequently asked questions, and people can go to that immediately and know where to find the answer in the document. And that can be helpful. So you can build that as you go. It's just a suggestion. It looks good. I unfortunately did read it, and I mean, it took a couple of times to get through it, but it's not a short document. But good work.
Good, though.
I'll be careful here. If someone wants to cheat the system, cash is always an obvious point to try to cheat it because you can, someone gave me 20 bucks, I say this gave me 10, I pass along 10, put 10 in my pocket. And so from what I read here, there are more checklists involved of when I receive the money, that I have to then, at least to that person, show a receipt and keep those receipts passing along to the endpoint. If I see the emphasis, like every type of fund you can imagine, you had on there from penny wars to, I don't know what I saw on there, but you know, must have been 30 different types of funds that people are collecting. Is that a quick statement so far? Okay. The other way, which I didn't see, and maybe I'm missing it, is, I tried to ask at the last board meeting, is statements come in every month. The other way is you write checks out to yourself or you, someone that you know, and you get the bank statements in and somehow falsify those so someone who's overseeing you doesn't know. So the question is, is where do the bank statements go? Who sees them and checks over them before, I mean, extra set of eyes, if you will? Has that been changed or what's happened with that? Because to me, I didn't see it in here. Maybe I missed it. So if it's not in there, if it isn't, I apologize.
No, the main steps are the bank statements go to each school, to the principal. And the one thing, the checks can't be written out to yourself because each principal has to sign the check. So the banker creates the check from an authorized document, and then the check goes to the principal for their signature.
That's now?
It was the same before. Some people, some schools had decided to use a rubber stamp, and we've eliminated those. Those were never part of a procedure or approved policy. So that's how some things might have slipped through.
And the thing to remember is the bankers and the secretaries report to the principal at each school. They're not part of finance.
The principal has to set off and every check that goes out, does two signatures required?
No, just the principal.
Just the principals only?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There's two signatures required on the request from the club advisor and a student representative of the club.
Okay, so the policy hasn't changed. What has changed is rubber stamps have gone away. Is it a thing where, you ever seen MASH and Radars working with Colonel Blake, I think it was? And he does signing so many things, he has no way he's signing, and even authorized the release of a private Charles Lamb one, so if I remember the story as well.
I remember that one, yeah.
Is that a problem where principals are not, do they have the time and the ability to watch it? Are we talking like 30 checks a month, like 500 checks a month?
We would have no idea of how the principals are.
How many checks do they have to approve a month, give or take?
Now, when we were talking about the $18,000, we have to remember that wasn't all staying at the high school. A lot of that money was coming down here and being deposited.
Our principal of the high school, I'll expect to sign how many checks every month for this group? One, two, 10, 20, 100?
Maybe up to 50.
50 a month?
At the larger schools, you know, the higher-end schools.
We also have, we're electronically able to look at all their bank accounts now. We got Matt on that. So before, we had no access to their accounts. Only the signers or the principal had access to the account online. So now we are able to see what's going on in those accounts on a daily basis if we wanted to.
Okay, and if there are any current cases out there, when those are all said and done, we will know how things were done. When the appropriate time comes, we'll get information as to how things occurred, when things are appropriate to be done.
I don't know if we can talk about that.
Okay.
If there's nothing else.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. Anyone else have questions at all?
I do. Is most of this receipt done, all done by paper, or is it a combination of electronic? Or is it primarily just paper receipts now?
We are currently working on trying to develop a, for the fee receipt paras that are at each high school, we're trying to work on a system that will automatically give a little receipt off of like a thermal printer. But right now, it's paper receipts.
Okay. Thank you.
Numbered paper receipts.
Yeah. So we do have, we have numerical control over the receipts, too, so we know that all have been issued in sequence, and if there was one missing or a three-stick, we would know.
So it's possible in the future that this all could be electronic, even the check writing could be.
It's possible, yes.
It's possible, but yeah. Okay.
Other questions? Now, I'd like to thank Keith and Jamie and Matt. It's a tough job, and especially in light of some of the things that have happened recently. And trying to do it as you go is not always the easiest thing as such, and it's a tremendously thick document and that, and to look at all the nuances. But I think it's going to be an ongoing process, and I think we have the right people in there to do it. I, in behalf of the board and the, or at least the committee, thank you very, very much for doing this. Job well done is always what we want, so thank you. We'll go on to the next. Keith, you're up again for the discussion at UNESCO.
Earlier in probably the fall, we had a meeting with UNESCO, an energy-saving group. We were connected to them primarily because one of their lead people, Jennifer Everhart, was also with Focus on Energy. That was the name of it, right? Focus on Energy had done a couple of reviews of a few of our facilities a couple of years back. And with our concern and interest in not just saving energy, but just review of the facilities that we do have, we asked them back and let them perform an initial review on six of our facilities, Parker, Franklin, Edison, Jefferson, and Lincoln. And what I want to do today is not go over a lot of details. I want to show you some of the output and then lead to another request. So it's not going to be on page three, "Look at this graph," and on four, it's 47%, 90%. But what we did was in early December, we met with them after they had done their preliminary report, and they noted that this was their upper-level review, not their full review. But with their upper-level review, they put together what they call the yearbook. We only have four copies of this, so I would just say if anyone's interested and wanted to look at this. But I was just kind of awestruck at the information they put. If you look at this book, they start out, I mean, this, it looks like, you know, you've seen books like this before that is all fluff, and then it's really not meaningful, and you go, "Well, look at all this. I could have narrowed it down to five pages." But in this book, they start out with cost analysis, not only between our buildings, but between other districts as well. And they have comparatives. Then they examine the conditions of key areas, and even though you can't read it, and again, I'm just trying to give you an overall view of what they did. These are all the areas, hot water heater, hot water distribution, boiler, unit ventilators, chiller systems, to where this number is the average life expectancy, and this is the actual age of equipment. Now for this one, this one looks favorable because it's Parker, and they just had a huge renovation. But if I would be lucky enough to find one, here we go. Franklin Middle School, built in, I believe, 1961. The dart graph is the average life expectancy, the light bar is the actual age. So you can see, here is the summary of this. The items in green, the green part of the pie is the ones that are in the acceptable range. Caution, alert, so this is the best, this is the second best, this is the third best, this is the fourth best. So they've gone through a lot of these items. They have details, they have pictures. I did make copies to pass out of two other sub-books that they put together. And I'll pass these around. The first one primarily is some support that does show up in this book, but it's like they went through and took pictures of everything they saw that they thought we could do better on. And I don't know how many I just passed around, but I'll just pass them all.
Oh, I see they're separate handles. It's okay.
No, those are the same things that I'm passing now. The second one I'm going to pass out has the same picture on it, but it'll have a different title. Because in the end, what I'm interested in anyway, well, I should say one of many things I'm interested in, is what does this mean financially? And this next one I'm going to put out shows some of the summaries of what they put together with certain scenarios. They had ranked things by priorities and said scenario one is this, this, and this. And they show how much it would cost to fix, how much savings there might be, and a payback period for each thing. Now, one of the things that, we talked about this in Directors the other day, sometimes people, when we have to make cuts or cost reductions, they'll say, "Well, let's put in this new system and then we'll save all this energy." Well, that's true, but most of these big items don't have paybacks until like 10 years or 15 years. So the thing we always have to recognize is we can do some great things that will save energy, but as far as repaying the costs or the loans that we have, it's a long-term deal. So a smart long-term deal, a good long-term deal if you're looking for health of the district in the future, but it's just, we can't go in and say, "Here's $5 million of improvements, and we'll save $5 million next year." So I'll pass this out, too, so at your leisure, if anyone has leisure, you can look through that as well. Now, what I'm doing again is just saying, this is the type of thing that they've done with a overall upper-level review of six facilities.
Do we have already facilities?
Nineteen. So we talked to them, I asked them at the meeting, and they gave us two proposals, more or less, not really proposals, but we were talking about, okay, so what else could we do? Because, you know, if we would have walked in there with that meeting and I would have got an eight-page handout, I would have thought, "Well, gee, thank you very much." They said if they wanted us to do the six again with their full detail, it would probably take about three months to get their reviews. If we wanted to do all of our facilities, it would take about six months because they would be able to get some economies of scale of doing everything at once, having everybody here at one time. They had three or four people looking through the building, each one of them specialized in something. They took pictures. I mean, if you look at some of those pictures, they were joking about some of the, what is it, the boiler at Franklin?
And Washington.
And Washington. You know, they looked like something out of a Frankenstein movie. And one of them looked dangerous enough that they said, "Well, they probably just held the camera around the corner, took a picture, and ran." So there's some interesting things there. So again, I'm not going to go through this in detail. My point wasn't to bring out points and argue details with the results. My goal today was to come to the board or come to the committee and just get a head nod to say, you know, "We'd like all this information tomorrow, but I think it might be well-served in the long term to the community and to the schools if we were to ask them for their full review and get something for every single building." In the end, we will have financial suggestions, we will have energy suggestions, and we will have a good review.
So can I ask a question? Carl?
Go ahead.
So I assume they don't work for free?
Correct.
Okay. Typically, what do they tell us the investment we're making with them, what our return period will be? I'm sure they must have some formulary they use with other districts.
The, their answer to that is that we don't pay them directly. They will get a percentage of what goes out to be put in through the contractor.
Okay.
So if we had $100,000 something or other and went to the contractor and we got their list of prices, there would be a line item in there for an amount to UNESCO.
It'd be an administrative charge?
Yes.
Okay, so that makes sense. Are you asking us to move forward with doing a preliminary analysis for the remaining buildings? Is that what they're suggesting?
This is the full analysis, correct, Dave? That's what they said, yeah. This would be the full analysis of everybody, including the six. They already did the preliminary. They would do the extra steps to make it a full analysis.
And then the outcome we would receive would be looking at our capital improvement plan, aligning what they find with our capital improvement plan and refining our capital improvement plan.
And?
And looking for peaks that we may need to address financially over the next five to 10 years to get us up to speed. Because I know, I looked at the reports on Franklin, and we're way past, we're way past life expectancy, some of the things I was part of installing 20 years ago. So, and their life expectancy was 12. So that they're still running is frankly amazing in some of the cases.
And these financial reports, it's not just, this is what you have to do next year. They have the payback periods and the amount saved and the amount spent up for 20 years.
But we won't have to, as individuals or board members or you necessarily, or Dave, have to create that detail. They will create that detail based on their findings and give us a plan that'll lay us out for the next five to 10 years and say, "Here's where you should spend money, here's where you shouldn't spend money, and here's your peaks. We're going to need larger sums of money to address the needs." Is that accurate?
Yes, and Dave, the responsibility of Dave and I primarily is to look at their report and make sure it makes sense to us.
Right.
If it passes the smell test.
Right.
And again, just like with my forecast the other night, you know, with that one, if I was half wrong, if I was 50% wrong, I was still off by $2 million. This is the kind of thing, too, where they had some scenarios where just with the first six buildings at an upper level, we could have to spend $20 million if we had the bottomless pocket, you know, to fix everything that they spot. So it'll give us detail, it'll give us ranges, and then it'll be up to us to make sure it smells right and then decide what to present to the board to say, you know, because we don't have a bottomless pocket, obviously.
Right.
And we'll pick the key ones. But it gives us something more than just, the other important thing to me is it's more than just anecdotal. I mean, we can sit here and talk about how old Franklin is and how we need new things, but we need somebody to do a review like this to show us, "Here it is exactly, and to replace this, it costs this, and if you borrow to pay for it, you know, we have low interest rates now. You'd pay it off in 14 years," or something like that.
And 10 and 12 years ago, we had a staff person that was under contract that did that work for us, and now we're using a subcontractor, basically. I'm assuming that Commissioner Ardenry's work of going in and going through the schools and looking at facilities and looking at roofs and all those things he did over the past 18 months are factored into some of the things we see here.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah. Sounds like we need to be doing it. Otherwise, we don't have good data in front of us to make decisions financially.
Other comments? Bill? Greg?
Where's the easy buddy? It's not going to cost us for them to do their work.
No.
And so that becomes a, yeah, let's move forward with it. Do we need a motion for that? See if this is there.
I just mainly wanted a head nod if possible.
I'm not sure we do because that's a function of the finance. And Dave?
And the reason I wanted the head nod was so the board would recognize it may take six months to get this rather than me not saying anything and everybody wondering, "Well, where is it? Where is it? Where is it?"
Yeah, and actually, what would be helpful is if they can, if you move forward, when you move forward with them, if they can give us some update dates, like April 15th, they're going to give us X, and June 15th, they're going to give us Y, and October, they're going to give us Z, and then we'll know exactly where we are financially.
And we can have them come, as they did for one meeting, and just give their own update, too, verbally through their mouth.
Well, that'd be great.
I would say the only cost to us is some time, which is well-spent, I believe. And again, we can let them go forward with this work we've directed them to, and the only time we have to really get involved after that is the discussion and okaying of contracts if we decide that's the way we want to go. They're gambling, we're going to buy into this.
They're pretty confident, yes. And I would be, too.
Yeah. I think Greg can attest to that. So, okay, I think that's good. You'll report at the board meeting on this?
Yes, we can.
I think it would be important that everybody knows this is happening.
Yes.
And that. Are you comfortable with that, too?
Yeah.
So that's that. Moving on to next one is the update progress of fiscal 2015-16 capital improvement projects. And Keith and Dave will do this, and I think it's just bringing us right up to date to where we are at this time from the last one.
Yes. At the last, I think one of the last meetings, we do this on a frequent basis. We probably, or maybe a month later this time than we had been in prior years, but we're asked to just show where are we with our big projects with the capital improvements. We list basically the larger items on these piece of papers, and you know that some of the items, when we approve them in the capital improvement plan, there are items like cement work or pneumatic controls maintenance, which are not specific to one building, but the cement work you do for the major items, but then when you have the cracks or the ones where people are falling over something or to avoid people falling over something, we don't have that in detail. Some of the bigger items we have, we are limited to performing the work either in the summer, which we still have summer school. We always seem to cram a lot into the holiday break, not the Christmas break, and also spring break. So a lot of these items, when you look at it especially, and you can obviously figure these out, when, you know, carpet replacement, we're not going to be doing that in the middle of February. We'll be doing that when kids aren't in classes. Some of these others, we do sporadically where they don't get in the way of other things. But in looking at this, the two bigger items that we've had done that are completed were the parking lots, the parking lot at Harrison and the roof at Monroe. Interestingly enough, we have been able to come in about $100,000 under on both of those combined. I asked Dave then to look at our 10-year plan, to look at the items that weren't selected for this year's budget because, you know, we only go so far down the list, and asked what his suggestions would be to use part of this money. Now, we know that if we've saved $100,000 on two items right now, we're not going to go out and spend it all tomorrow because there's no guarantee that we're going to have any other items under budget and may have it over budget. So we were looking at some of the things, and what he suggested was that he planned on using the remaining budget to replace the parking lot and exterior building lights, convert them to LED at Harrison School, which was a priority three, and also replacing parking lot exterior building lights for some of the other schools as well. We can go through that list eight different ways and probably come up with things that everybody would say is worthwhile, but I just wanted to let you know that we did have a little excess now, and we were going to try to focus on items that were on the 10-year plan so we can get them off the 10-year plan and move forward with that in the future years. I don't know if we necessarily need approval, and I don't think we have action on there anyway, but I wanted to let you know that that was our direction because we did have some excess funds. We are going to still apply them to items that were on the current CIP budget for this year and keep working our way down the list. year and keep working our way down the list.
What's the energy savings type project?
And safety, and safety, when you have the outside, outside lighting for the buildings.
Okay. Questions?
We haven't had any other safety issues come up this fall that we'd need to, I haven't heard of any, but we haven't had anything where we've had trips and falls from carpet or anything that's a...
Nothing of size.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have the little things here and there, but...
Okay.
Nothing that just, usually, you'd be repaired by the maintenance man showing up there, and two hours later, it's done.
The safeties are, asked me to ask that question, so...
Okay.
I have a question, just how does it apply to the budget? Because we already closed last year, and this was in, was that for, we started early and it would be part of this year, so that's okay?
It's part of this year's budget. The budget itself, the dollar amount that was approved, doesn't change. It's just now that it, a couple items were less than what we anticipated, we have more money to do other items to go down. Yeah, just, this happens in every single, every single department and budget that we have, but I wanted to let the committee know, because this is one of our larger budgets, and one that comes through details on here, just to let them know, we've got some excess, we're gonna put a little bit of it towards something else. We'll come back in two months, maybe three months, have another update on where we are at that time.
And I know, trusting Dave and the work he does, that he'll pick the best things to get done at the highest priority and the biggest return. And I know he'll report to us as he finishes up, and will that money just flow into this year's budget? If there's anything left over, just stay in Fund 10, is that would be it?
It would be analyzed with any other overages or underages and reported to the board, probably April or May, and then we'll determine...
That makes sense to me.
If we need something, or if we have something to spend on.
Or if we put it in Fund 46, at the end of the fiscal.
We could do that. Four years when we get at it again, but it's a worthwhile suggestion. Okay, and is there any more questions on that? I thank you, Dave. Thank you very much for your work. Keith, the review of our district leases is the next step.
I'll wait till this gets passed around, but we do this every year as well, about this time. We have three main leases of facilities. You'll see them on the list. This is a very simple schedule. There's not a lot of detail or whatever to it. Three items. We have the office building at 31 West Milwaukee Street, which is Rock River Charter School. We do three floors, a little over 11,000 square feet. That is with Bob Kimball. And you can see our contract end date for this, we just, we're going year by, or we had a year extension to a longer contract, is 6/30/2016. We have begun discussion with Mr. Kimball about possibly renewing, or probably renewing the lease, as we found out with, when we were doing boundary study work, that if we are going to close a lease, we would need to have something else in place, and that would take a long time. But where we're at right now is that the contract ends June 30th, and again, we are working on that one. Arrow Park is Tagos-Tate. Again, you can see all of these are a little over, all between 11,000 and 12,000 square feet, coincidentally. You've seen the layout there. We have that lease with the Hendrix Group, and that contract ends in August. They, if you remember, Kimball, a couple years ago, actually reduced our rent for a couple years, when we were having a tough time. We got it back up to where it would have been, and it just has a small increase every year. Arrow Park, Tate, and Tagos has remained frozen the last couple years. We've had some dealings with Hendrix, where they've been very generous, and, and we signed an early lease, so they could include it in some of their investment items, so they let us have it for another year for the same rate. So that one hasn't fluctuated. Our storage on North Parker, again, 11,525 square feet. Storage is about, two-thirds of that is the 30-foot tall roof area where we house our trucks, our, our Bobcats, our outside items, our trailers. What am I missing, Dave? Mowers. All of our heavy equipment that we just, you know, we have some trucks out here in the back, the normal pickup-sized trucks. Everything else that's down there is, that's about two-thirds of the space. Another third of the space is some excess maintenance parts, desks, theater sets, racks. It's, it's pretty full. Two or three years ago, we went through that area and cut the square footage down by half, by tossing things, and we can still, we go through periodically and still get rid of quite a bit of stuff there. So, that is just a month-to-month basis. It has been that way for about five or six years now. And the kicker there, again, when we were doing boundary lines, and people would say, well, let's close a school and use that for storage, you can't drive too many, too many trucks and mowers and Bobcats into an empty Wilson Elementary and have a place to park it. So, the kicker there, again, is having the tall ceilings and the room to house those moving equipments. So, this is our update. This is as of July 1st, 2015. Those are the rents that we are paying. So at least you will have this in front of you in case conversations come up where you need to know, how much are we paying each month? That's what it is for the fiscal year 15-16, with the exception of, well, Hendrix stayed the same, but it could get off by a couple months potentially. But for the rest of this year, these are the monthly rent payments for these three items.
Questions? Bill?
I am guessing that we also pay utilities besides these rates on, since the Rock River and or Tagos, so there's rent, there's heat and those things included?
I believe utilities are included, yes. We don't, we don't, that doesn't show up on our energy reports.
Okay, so, other costs besides this would be things like phone or the incidentals? Does utility-wise, were...
Utility-wise, it's part of the lease, yes.
Okay. I'm guessing that we have physical space, if we had to, available at our high schools to house these programs. The question is, is that conducive to the idea of having a separate location for the types of program that they are, and the goals of those programs to be not tied to each high school, because you have the East Side, West Side, Parker-Craig thing going on sometimes, and also because of these, you know, you don't wanna have, certain students, I mean, the idea is to have a separate location for their activity. But there would be space, if we had to find space at the high schools?
I don't know if we can make that statement right now.
Okay.
I mean, theoretically, yes, if you crammed everybody and everything into one side and just shoved it all over, you'd probably be able to fill this up, but I don't know what that would do with the class sizes, or how you would scrunch everything up in the high schools and so on. We haven't done that study. We didn't do that at Boundary Line either, I don't believe.
That was true at one time, when we were looking into that and looking for making some changes. We started measuring space, but we haven't looked at that for a couple of years, so, and charter schools have grown in size, so we would really have to relook at all of that information again.
And our other property we have, not property, but other space we have, we get for free from, from UW Rock County for the, Rock University High School is covered for free, if you will, as far as...
At this time, it is.
As of now, yes.
All right, thank you.
It lets us know, it does represent over $300,000 a year that we're paying in rents. But the rents for the space, and considering that literally, it's like a condo, that all the details are paid for, that we don't even have to, to that degree. But I think Bill brought up a good point. Maybe we should be saying, what's our fallback? Should they not be available, or we need more space? So, is that a conversation that we could look further into, not overnight, but, you know, down the road as time becomes available? What are the alternatives? What would over $300,000 a year buy for our own space? Is that the way we want to go? I think there's always, we come up with this every few years, the same questions. But I think the analysis is worthwhile taking, and I would respect the administration if they would look at that, at their fitting it in to their, their schedules and that, and come back with a further report down the road on that. If no one has, does anyone have an objection to that, or should we not do it, or any thoughts?
Well, so specifically, what are you asking them to do?
I'd like to look at what are the options, and that's a good point, Steve. What are the options if we had to find another source or another space? And would one of those options possibly be owning, buying a building or something and filling them into there in some manner, and is it possible to do that? It's a, it's a long-term question, and there's a lot of issues with that, knowing the charter schools, because they would have to have separate spaces away from each other, because they're different type things. I don't know. I'm just saying, is, did I answer that to you? It's kinda budging around, and I don't mean to, but I just don't wanna make sure that we are evaluating things. And Bill, what are you thinking?
I don't think, that's such a vague question. I wanna have the administration taking into reports. So we have a specific question, we wanna know, that's worthwhile, fine, but to say, see what options might be, maybe for, somehow for this, perhaps someday, who knows? Perhaps, maybe, is not effective use of time. Perhaps just to get a rough idea of space at the high schools, if that's a quick question to be answered, fine. If it's not, don't even go further. I mean, just, you know, if you have five classrooms, 10 classrooms empty, just to know at some point, that'd be my only interest that I would have.
Well, yeah, for clarity, the, the Rock River Charter School has grown exponentially over the last 10 years. I actually was on the charter board when we started the charter, whatever, whatever year that was. I have a shirt that doesn't fit me anymore, so I know it's a long time ago. But that is a fully utilized space, and the lease agreement is a pretty reasonable price for the amount of square feet that we're receiving. Tagos and Tate, you know, that's, that's spread out in the building, but because you're telling us that they haven't raised the rate in multiple years, and they're paying the utilities for that facility, that's probably reasonable. The only question I would have would be if it's possible for maintenance to take a look at what we, quickly, what we have in storage and create, maybe Becky could help, create a spreadsheet of what we're storing, and then we could hand that off to, we could even hand it off to some of our students in our design classes. How big a space do you need to store this? Would it be, would it be better for us to have a storage facility that we built at Parker and Craig High School, that we could put some of that equipment in rather than leasing? But the cost to build, just a cold storage in Janesville right now is between $35 and $40 a square foot. So to replicate this amount of space would cost over $400,000. So, that, the information, when I, I talked to an architect a few weeks ago, he said, they always like to start with, what do you have in this space? Does that all have to be there? And if it all has to be there, is it organized correctly with storage? And I've been in that storage in quite a while, but I'm not questioning how people are doing things, it's just, you start with those facts, then does the board wanna spend half a million, $2 million to get permanent storage space that we can use for our maintenance? And, as I think I've shared before, some other places have donated, businesses that have gone out of business, in Appleton, for instance, they donated a building that they turn into their facility's management, but...
GM's not available.
No. Yeah, yeah.
We don't have that much...
But you wouldn't want it either. But I mean, those are, those are conversations, but David has to tell us, here's what would really be best for us, here's where we'd really like to have our equipment, and then you build that into the long-term capital improvement plan.
I would have to hear like a philosophical argument from the leaders of Tagos and Rock River, of them saying, this would work just fine at a school, because I don't think that's gonna happen. I think the whole idea was, it works because of, it's separate. So, unless we're, again, dire straits, I think what we're saving there, we would lose, you know, the whole purpose of the programs are there. So unless they said, you know what, we can make it work, it would be good over here, I can do it this way, then I'd say, okay, but until that time comes, I think spending the time to look at it is not worthy.
The other thing that, to go along with that, Bill, is I think that Dr. Erhard probably has some data that shows, and these principles, what how discipline referrals went down when they created their own space, because it was a separate learning environment. So would we want to move them somewhere else and have discipline referrals go up? That would be counterproductive. So I think they would say, that they have far fewer problems with discipline at Tagos and, well, they've told me that, at Tagos and at Rock River, being at those separate sites.
Okay.
So, that's important.
Then it's safe to say that unless something actually pops up, there's no reason to really do any, any, spend any time on it at this point. Are we on a consensus on that?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. And I'm sure the administration's aware that what-ifs can happen, so we'll trust their judgment on that. So, thank you. Ah, okay. Oh, we get the projections, or the up-to-date happenings. Is that a better way of saying it?
Yes. The monthly results and the financial statements were sent out to everybody. I'm going to pass this around, though, as I'm talking about what you had in front of you or what was sent to you. Again, we don't have any large variances that we know of. If you look, we've spent about $1 million less year-to-date through November than we did last year, but half a million of that is maintenance, which means we've just had a different timing of spending. The other one, where was that other one? Oh, that was in total, that had that with it, the $600,000 for the purchased services, and we've had a decrease in the non-capital items from last year. Again, it's too early to say this is, we're going to be, it's not under budget necessarily. This is just compared to the spending pattern of last year. If you look at the balance sheet, or straight to the fund balance, we had the interesting month of November, where we always hit our lowest mark of cash. We obviously knew it was coming, and basically, we had more, a higher fund balance and a larger cash balance than we did last year. You can see the new year is the blue fiscal year 16, because we held back on a couple large checks. If not, we would've been pushing the bottom, but that was fine. Basically, held the checks for Mercy and Dean, that were supposed to go out the week, last week of November, and we got our payment from the state in early December, and that was fine with them. They knew it was gonna be held for a week, and that wasn't a big deal. So, again, once, when you know it's coming up, you have time to manage for it. Our finance department can, can do anything, as long as we know what's coming up, and be prepared for the emergencies as well. At the last meeting, I believe it was Commissioner Huth, that asked for a graph or a schedule that showed our seasonality and the way our money comes in with the way the monies are expended, and as I predicted last time, I said, I bet Matt can come up with something really good, really quick, and I don't know if it was by the time I sat down in my chair, but it was close to that when I got back to my office. He put together a graph showing the detail, and more importantly, I like graphs, and they're great, but I really like them when they've got the backup numbers behind it, because then you can see the detail and say, high, low, whatever. So, this is basically our cash and cash basis revenue analysis, and you can see, like we've always known, you get some payments from the state, August, September, nothing until the first week of December, it jumps up. We get two installments of property taxes, one in January, one in February, another big payment by the feds in March, and then we get the larger payment of the year on about June 20th. One thing this year is that there will be about $1 million of the per pupil aid that historically we've received in March, that the state is not going to pay us until July. So again, we know it now, I mean, we can, we can say, I don't like that, but that doesn't help us. So we know what we've got coming in front of us. However, we usually have, you know, we have a little more cushion at the end of May and through June than we do in November. We know it's happening now, we'll be able to manage it, and then we'll just have a cash switch. Instead of receiving it in March, we'll receive it in July. But this should give you a good idea. We've got three years on here. Matt broke these bars out into intermediate state, federal funding, so this is, this just gives you a good feel, again, or a good understanding, I should say, of how... gives you a good feel, again, or a good understanding, I should say, of how we do not receive our money in 12 equal payments throughout the year. And if you'd like us to revise this, or throw other factors on here, or come up with something else that we haven't even talked about, we're more than happy to put together whatever sort of schedules or graphs you may want to see.
I have a question. So have we ever, this is very good, Matt, thanks for putting it together, it's what I was looking for. So have we ever had the conversation with the legislature, telling them that we would appreciate it if they accelerated their payment into the beginning of October? So we're not the only district that's dealing with this, this bottom drop. I'm not sure they even know this is true. And if they knew it was true, and they could deviate from the way they provide state funding to the schools, districts wouldn't have to borrow, we don't have to borrow money, because we maintain a good fund balance. But districts are having to borrow money because of the way we receive money. And the state has the money in their coffers that could help us not have that big dip. Have we ever talked to them about that?
I remember a few years ago, Commissioner Peter Severson, I don't remember if he was on the legislative committee or not, they were working on a proposal to try to get the money in 12 equal payments. And of course, the state will say, we can't do that because we haven't collected our money.
Yeah, they won't do that.
We would like to do that. Like you said, there are what I would consider to be rich districts that have to short-term borrow every year, because the richer districts get their money from property taxes. And I know Middleton has a special deal with their city, or their county, or whomever it is, that instead of getting their money in January and February, they have deals where they get part of their money in December. Now Middleton, you know, you just say they've got more money than they can spend, but they don't get it evenly, and so historically, traditionally, part of their annual budget is to have short-term borrowing because of the disparity.
So is there value to sharing this with our legislative subcommittee and asking us to send this with a narrative to the, our legislators and say, we'd like you to help us eliminate the dip in November by changing the way funding is distributed to districts? At least it would be advocating for all the districts.
Or even the June one, too.
Right.
You know, we get it, that used to be the cause of our issue with the fund balances. People would say, look at your high fund balance, and we'd say, yeah, but seven days before the year ended, it was like this.
Right.
And then we got a big payment, and you just don't have a chance to spend it.
This is the revenue on the bottom, correct? The three-years revenue, dark is the local money, lighter blue is the state-funded money. So you're saying, Steve, move December up to, I think it's up to October, I misunderstood. You're saying move December's receipts from the state earlier to?
Yes.
Okay.
If we could get them to even two weeks, change the distribution to districts two weeks earlier, it would flatten that out, unless they can show evidence that they don't have money in the state budget to do that. It isn't an issue for us, because we have enough of a fund balance, but interest rates are projected to go up in the next couple of years, and this has become a bigger and bigger issue for districts. This is, I think, larger districts can advocate with the legislature and say, this is fixable with a computer change.
The state fiscal year is also a...
The state fiscal is...
July.
Is the same as us.
That's why ours is what it is, is it matches the state.
Just sharing the information and giving a reaction would seem logical to me.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else? I can shed a little light on it, being part of the Policy and Resolutions Committee of WASBA, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. Issues like this have come up, but mainly it's been to level it. Pete was one, did submit, we did submit as a district, and other districts have too, but since the state has really said, no, we've just felt it didn't go anywhere as such. However, to make a specific month or two would be something to put together a resolution for next year of the legislative committee, and I commend you for that. That's exactly the kind of input they need. And then our lobbyist can go out and tell, well, we don't want the whole thing, but we think these months would be very critical if you could do it. At least, I see this one, you know, in the fall, that would just have a lot of merit to it. So I would say whoever, let's pass that on to the legislative and somehow remember about it. I think it's good.
Well, can we present it to them and send a, do we still hold legislative meetings with the legislators?
Yep. When there's a need, Kathy's going to have one, I think, coming up.
This would be a perfect topic to shed light, see if they could help us.
There is another thing. If you can put together a good resolution and work with the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, they still could be brought forward on the delegate floor, but that's a little bit dangerous, because people don't have enough time to think about it and work into it. And that would be Greg.
Well, my, yeah, my personal preference would be if we informed the legislators, and in next session, they could draft a bill that would change it.
We could send that to our legislators.
And we could see what they want to do. We don't have to wait for WASB or anybody else. We could just, if they can find logic in doing it, maybe they can help us.
We can do a two-prong attack on that, and I think that's good thinking. So you want to talk to Kathy on it, or would you like me to?
You can do that.
Since I'm also, we're all on the committee.
Not me.
Yeah, it's a committee of the whole.
Oh, okay.
It's just who is able to come. So any other questions or things on that?
Are we pretty clean?
Okay.
I had one question on UNESCO. One other thing, do they advocate, or do they help find funding sources?
Yes.
They do that?
Yes. And they can also, like, they also find, I think, what they call rebates, too. They know, it's not, it's not, some of them are true rebates, but it's more like they know that if they can put in these lights, they'll get, it's almost like writing a grant. They'll know they'll get $50,000 back for it.
Okay, yes, great.
And I'd bring up one other thing. They did suggest at our initial meetings that they're very aware of how the laws work and what ways we can go with it, and I'm sure they'll suggest some of this, look at possibilities for us to consider. Pretty, but we were talking about last meeting.
Yeah, they know what they're doing.
So, okay. Okay. I'll move on.
Going back to the financial summaries and new graph and data, do we want to add this to our package?
Well, that was my plan.
Okay, all right, that was.
Yeah.
Super.
And we'll present it to the full board, that way, because we do the other one.
It'll be part of the, yes.
Thank you, Matt. It's a nice job. So, okay, let's go to future committee meeting items, including meeting times and agenda.
Oh, we need to move that. We need to get that on the consent. I'd move that to the consent agenda. The financials did the consent agenda, and Bill seconded.
You prefer it being on the consent?
Well, that's how it's always been.
Yeah, sure.
And Bill seconded.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but it's okay. Clarity is always welcome.
Yep.
Okay.
Do we have to vote?
Do we have to?
Yeah. Aye.
Okay. Will we make a motion?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to move the presentation, the fiscal 2015-16 year-to-date November 2015 financial summaries and consider approval to move to the, or, and move it to the full board, not consider. Take that out. You okay with that?
Yes.
Did I massacre it enough?
Got it.
Okay. Any comments? Then we shall vote on it. Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say hey. Okay, that's good. Now can I move date?
Yeah.
Are we comfortable? Thanks for bringing that up. I just want to say the meeting times and will stay the same. The agenda items, and just kind of explain it, this is pretty much is done through the administration. They bring that up. I think they confer with Kevin, and then they come to me. Keith sends it to me, is there anything I want to add or anything? And that's pretty much, and you guys have gone through this in the past. Little bit of a thing on some items, and I'm not going to bring them up at the board and that, but I will work on them for better refinement, to bring forward with hope, more clarity in the future. But it's not, it's not on the agenda at this point. So if everyone's comfortable, I'm going to work with Kevin and others on what that might look like, if anything. So, anyone else have something?
One thing I will start bringing back in January will be further work on the naming rights. You know, we had the honorarium portion has, still needs a little refinement, but that at least was in place. We're going to bring it back so we can give some more attention to the sponsorship side.
Okay. And you're going to bring that in January?
Yes. And we'll probably have that two or three months in a row, more than likely.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah.
Appreciate you doing it. Anything anyone else would like to have on the agenda, other than our normal things, or passing? Okay. That's it. Meeting adjourned.
Do you have another date? Do you have a January date?
We just said we're going to keep working on the same schedule.
It'd be the 19th, the third Tuesday.
Yeah, we do the third Tuesday every month, unless we decide to deviate at 3:30.
And again, if anybody wants to just take one of these and peruse, feel free...
That's WASBA. Carl, that's WASBA.
Wisconsin Association of School Boards?
The convention, on the 19th, yeah.
What do we want about the convention?
That's on the 19th.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. That whole week is pretty well ate up, unless we do something on Monday. Would there be something there?
We're having, well, the PTC meets on Monday, the 18th.
Okay. I don't go up till Tuesday. Isn't that right?
Tuesday evening?
I'm not there Monday night, I'm Tuesday evening.
Tuesday evening?
Yeah.
So can we have a meeting before people go up?
I couldn't make it, because I have a meeting in the afternoon there. So our option is, is to wait one week.
Sure, that's fine.
And...
That's a board meeting.
That's be, just before the board meeting. Or we could do it on, we could do it on Monday, the 18th, or...
Monday, the 25th, can you guys, will that work?
Oh, that's missing the two board meetings, I think, do, I'm not sure.
No, Monday, the 25th is the day before a board meeting.
Well, if it doesn't matter, if it isn't that matter that much, let's just do it on a Tuesday, the 26th.
That's a board meeting.
Board meeting.
Second, oh, I apologize, you're right. God, I'm really flying wrong there. Okay, what is your preference? We got two dates, the 18th to the 25th.
25th would work better for me.
Greg?
They're all our...
You do the best you can, yeah. Bill?
Aye.
Fine, okay. So we're going to make it...
The 25th.
The 25th, 3:30, here, at this, at the educational service for that month. Okay. Thank you for bringing it up. I didn't realize that.
You can have them if you'd like.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else?
Those want to see them, I have my version of the papers, I was supposed to ask them for them.
It's your choice.
I expect you to read it. It's a lot of stuff.
Okay, that's it. Thank you, everyone.
Appreciate the help. Despite me, we got something to talk about.
There you go, thank you. This looks like a high school year, but doesn't.
Exactly.
Have you signed your copy of the UNESCO?
Maybe they do, that way I'm perfect.